Okay, so it is 5:02 on Monday, April 27th. I'd like to call to order a special meeting of the Board of Education of the Wassa School District. I hope everybody can hear me. I'm just gonna let, can you give, can somebody give me a thumbs up? Thank you, Jim. Got it. Okay, so I'm going to read the notice, given the circumstances under which we are meeting. All Wassa School District Board of Education meetings will be conducted as a virtual meeting due to an active emergency situation, COVID-19 pandemic, meaning that multiple board members may be participating in the meeting from remote locations through the use of communications technology, and that public access to the meeting may be arranged through the use of technology. Members of the media and public may attend in person by calling 1-715-261-0598, or through the virtual WebEx meeting. The link is available on the wasaschools.org website. In the event the meeting requires a password, please use 1234 as the password. All public participants' phones, microphones, and chat dialogue boxes will be muted or disabled during the meeting. Members of the public who do not wish to appear in person may view the meeting live via the Wassa Area Access Meeting on the Government and Education Cable Channel 981. Wassa Area Access Meeting also livestreams the meeting on https://waam.vi-vit.com. The meeting will also be available on the Wassa Area Access Media YouTube channel a few days after filming. All meeting access information shall also appear in a prominent location on the Wassa School District website. For those individuals with disabilities, including individuals with visual or hearing impairments, as well as individuals who may have limited access to technology, please contact Deputy Clerk Cassie Peck at 715-261-0505, or cpeck@wassaschools.org. Okay, with that, we're going to move to Agenda Item Number Two, which is Election of Officers, and at this point, Dr. Hiltz will be the Secretary Pro Tem for this portion of the meeting.
Thank you, President Zunker. So for everybody's benefit, just to, we're doing elections a little bit different.
Your mic's off.
Oh, thank you. Have to remember to turn the microphone on. So just for everybody's benefit, we're doing elections a little bit differently this time because of the virtual nature, so we will take nominations for all four of the main office positions, President, Vice President, Treasurer, and Clerk, and then Board, once those are accepted and closed, Board members will then vote confidentially using the Google form that Mrs. Peck recently sent to the Board members. All right? So to begin, I would ask Deputy Clerk Peck to please read the Leadership Choice Report.
Hello. I'm reading the Leadership Choice Report for the role of President. Ms. Zunker said she was interested in the position. For the role of Vice President, Mr. McKee said he was interested. For the role of Treasurer, Mr. Trollope said he was interested. For the role of Clerk, Ms. Lowe said she was interested. Mr. Trollope said he was also interested in being the Chair of the Audit of the Bills. And one person, Mr. Boucher, said he was interested in being on the Audit of the Bills Committee. That does require three more people on the committee. The School Foundation Representative, Ms. Miles, said she was interested in that position. The CISA 9 Representative, Mr. Boucher, Ms. Miles, and Mr. Webster all said they were interested in that position. WASB Assembly Delegate, Ms. Lowe said she was interested in that position, as well as Mr. Webster. And Alternative Assembly Delegate, Ms. Lowe said she was interested in that position.
Is that the complete report, Cassie?
It is the complete report. For the positions that we are assigning today.
Right, yep, good, thank you, thank you. All right, so moving forward, we will accept nominations, one position at a time, starting with President. So Tricia Zunker has declared herself a candidate for the Office of President. Are there any nominations from the floor? I'm seeing none, you see us? Okay, hearing no additional nominations, I seek nomination to close, sorry, I seek a motion to close nominations.
And have them go one and two.
Lance is one.
Lance.
Did I see a two? Pat's two.
Thank you. Okay.
So all those in favor of closing nominations, say aye.
Aye.
All right, nominations are closed, thank you. All right, Pat McKee declared himself candidate for the Office of Vice President. Are there any nominations from the floor?
Let me see if there's any hands up. I see none.
Seeing none, I seek a motion to close nominations.
One.
Lee and Beth?
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I see a first and a second. All those in favor of closing nominations for Vice President?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, nominations for the Office of Vice President are closed.
Keith, point of order. With President, you didn't ask opposed. Do we need to go back to that, or?
I will go back and ask.
Okay.
Point of order was raised, I failed to ask for, when we closed nominations for the Office of the President. I asked for those in favor, but I did not ask for those opposed. Was anyone opposed to closing nominations for the Office of President?
None.
Okay, seeing none, nominations are closed, thank you.
Thank you.
Next office is Treasurer. Lance Trollope has declared himself a candidate for the Office of Treasurer. Are there any nominations from the floor?
I see, I see no hands.
Hearing no additional nominations, I seek a motion to close nominations. Do I have a first? See, Pat's first, and a second, Beth, thank you. All those in favor of closing nominations, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Opposed.
Seeing none, nominations for the Office of Treasurer are closed. Next position is that of Clerk. Ka Lo has declared herself a candidate for the Office of Clerk. Are there any nominations from the floor? Seeing none, I seek a motion to close nominations. Teresa's close, is there a second?
Two.
Lance, okay.
Okay.
All right, having a first and a second, all those in favor of closing nominations for Clerk? Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Seeing none, nominations for the Office of Clerk are closed. Thanks, everybody. The Board needs to appoint a Board Secretary and Deputy Clerk. I'd seek a motion to appoint Cassie Peck as Board Secretary and Deputy Clerk. Beth is first, is there a second? Jim is the second, all right, thank you. All in favor of Cassie Peck, say aye.
Say aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
All right, thank you. All right, so we, all the nominations are closed, so at this time, Board, I would ask to cast your ballots electronically. If you choose, nope, we don't have any nominations from the floor, so if you select those, and then make sure you hit Submit on that ballot form when you're done.
And Ka, I saw there was a message come through. Your ballot was sent to your Gmail account, because I wasn't sure if you were accessing your district account yet. Can you raise, give me a thumbs up that you heard and understood me? Thank you.
She's pausing, she just said okay, as if maybe she couldn't read it. Does she have access to it? We might want to ask. Should I ask her?
Yeah.
Ka, this is Bob Test. Are you able to access that ballot through Gmail, or should we resend it using your school district? Okay, she's asking to resend it through her Gmail account, because she's looking and doesn't see it.
Today was Saturday, 35, yeah, I don't know what.
Okay, she'll try to resend it.
I need to analyze. It was just sent again.
Cassie, sorry, would you tap that screen? Just wanted to shut down. We'll wait a second or two, and you can give us a thumbs up if you see it.
Seven responses.
We haven't officially welcomed Ka to the Board yet, have we?
No, not yet.
It's their first meeting.
Yeah, we just dove in.
I'll mention something, you congratulate new Board members, and then you can.
Yep. I think she got it.
Okay.
She did, good.
Quick draw, Cassie, nice job.
Well, they're not all in yet.
Yeah.
Let's celebrate when I get nine responses, thank you. Seven's probably.
How many do you have?
Seven, so far.
It's promising. Somebody might be deliberating.
Right.
Eight, we're at eight? It's hard, because I didn't accept, because I wanted it to be secret ballot, so I didn't put, I can't tell who hasn't seen it yet.
Oh, sure.
Still eight?
Still eight.
I'm gonna say we have eight, just make sure everybody's submitting.
Thank you.
We have eight ballots, we're waiting on one more. Again, just remember that you have to hit the Submit bottom, at the bottom, the Submit button at the bottom of the form. Teresa says you're waiting for hers, but hers won't work.
Okay, um.
Send me an email?
Yeah, have her send me an email.
Teresa, can you send Cassie an email with your vote? Okay.
Okay, so that's, but I can send it through her phone, yes, thank you.
Okay, give it a shot. Okay, thank you. She's gonna try to send it through her phone.
Okay.
To, something about school email, I don't know if she, it might not come from her school email address.
Okay.
It might come from whatever one. Do you need an email address on that? Ten-four. Ten-four, carry on.
I just don't want the results out there.
Right.
Just give me one second, get flooded back in.
She received it.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. The tabulated votes indicate the Board President will be Tricia Zunker. Board Vice President will be Pat McKee. Board Treasurer will be Lance Trollope. And Board Clerk will be Ka Lo.
All right, thank you, everybody. Congratulations to our Board Officers. And before I turn the meeting over to Board President Zunker, I just want to say welcome to Ka Lo in your first official meeting. President Zunker, you can take over.
Okay, thank you for that, Dr. Hiltz. Let's continue on, thank you, everyone, and I do also want to say a welcome to Ka Lo, and thank you for putting your name out there to serve as Board Clerk, and I also want to say a thanks to Jane Rouge for serving in that role this last year. Okay, so we are at Agenda Item Number Three, Appointing Audit of the Bills Committee Chair and Membership. So Lance Trollope shall serve as the Chair of the Audit of the Bills Committee, and I'm seeking interest from at least two more individuals. Is there any interest? I'm looking for a hand up, any interest from Board members?
Lee's got a hand up.
Lee does, okay. So is there any other interest in serving on the Audit of the Bills?
Lance is saying something.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You can make it at 4:45 if you can't, of course, understand.
New Board members.
Oh, right, so for anybody that is interested in serving on the, it does meet at 4:45 once a month, and I know there might be some work barriers for some individuals, which is why I'm asking who's interested instead of making a direct appointment. Anybody else?
Ka says she can.
She can do it? Okay. All right, thank you. So then I will be appointing Jim Boucher, Lance Trollope, I'm sorry, not Lance Trollope, Lee Webster, and Ka Lo to serve on the Audit of the Bills Committee. Thank you, everybody. All right, Agenda Item Four, Appoint Delegate and Alternative Delegate to the 2020 Delegate Assembly that is scheduled for January 20th through the 22nd of 2021. I will appoint Lee Webster as the Delegate, and Ka Lo as the Alternate Delegate. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Five, Appoint Board Member to the Wassa School Foundation. I will appoint Teresa Miles to serve as the Board Member to the Wassa School Foundation. Thank you, Teresa. Agenda Item Six, Appoint Board Member Representative to CISA 9 Annual Convention. This is August 3rd, 2020. I will appoint Teresa Miles to serve as the Board Member Representative to the CISA 9 Annual Convention. With that, I'm at Agenda Item Six, and I am seeking a motion to adjourn. If we can do a one and a two, just generally speaking, that will be our practice, so that Clerk Peck can see that, again, seeking a motion to adjourn.
All right, one, motion to two.
Got it.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, this meeting is adjourned, thank you, everybody. Okay, it is 5:21 PM on April 27th, 2020. I'd like to call to order a meeting of the Education Operations Committee meeting of the Wassa Board of Education. All Wassa School District Board of Education meetings will be conducted as a virtual meeting due to an active emergency situation, COVID-19 pandemic, meaning that multiple board members may be participating in the meeting from remote locations through the use of communications technology, and that public access to the meeting may be arranged through the use of technology. Members of the media and public may attend in person by calling 1-715-261-0598, or through the virtual WebEx meeting. The link can be found on the district homepage. In the event the meeting requires a password, please use 1234. All public participants' phones, microphones, and chat dialogue boxes will be muted or disabled during the meeting. Members of the public who do not wish to appear in person may email cpeck@wassaschools.org with "public comment" in the subject line. Those messages received prior to the start of the meeting will be provided to the Board President. Members of the public who do not wish to appear in person may view the meeting live via the Wassa Area Access Meeting on the Government and Education Cable Channel 981. Wassa Area Access Meeting also livestreams the meeting on https://waam.vi-vit.com. The meeting will also be available on the Wassa Area Access Media YouTube channel a few days after filming. All meeting access information shall also appear in a prominent location on the Wassa School District website. For those individuals with disabilities, including individuals with visual or hearing impairments, as well as individuals who may have limited access to technology, please contact the Deputy Clerk Cassie Peck at 715-261-0505, or cpeck@wassaschools.org. Moving on to Agenda Item Two, which is Approve the Minutes, I am seeking a motion to approve the minutes of March 16th, 2020.
Okay, can we get a one and a two again?
Lance is a one.
One and a two.
Pat's a one.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Abstentions? Okay, motion carries, meeting minutes are approved. All right, next is Agenda Item Three, Public and Student Comment.
And there were three items, and I laid them out for you.
Okay, so we did receive three public comments by email. I don't believe that I would read them in full, but I could summarize. We received one in regards to proposed referendum in closing elementary schools. Not in support of that, this public comment. We received a second public comment, oh, and that was received from a Debbie Hoff. Second public comment was received by a Tim Poggle, public comment regarding school referendum. There are many questions, it doesn't really indicate for or against, but really, just a number of questions that we don't have answers to at this time, because we're undertaking research on this. And then the third public comment was received by Angela Blobach, and this is also in regards to proposed referendum, again, just proposed referendum, and regarding closing elementary And it's not directly for or against, but again, more questions, quite a few questions there. So when we receive these public comments, is it going to be circulated to the full Board then?
It can, it was our first time having that, so I didn't.
Right, right, of course, since this is our first time doing this, we will make sure that this gets circulated to the full Board for review. Okay. All right, on to Agenda Item Four, Secondary Algebra Resource Adoption, and this is an action item, so who will be presenting on this? Dr. Hiltz?
Tonight, Mr. Weber, and I believe he has some representatives of the Adoption Committee to help him present.
Okay. Paul, just give me one second, I'll pull up your slideshow, okay?
I would like to welcome some guests, and we have in the audience James Wendling and Jason Myers are the co-department chairs at Wassa West, and Doris Martin, who's Department Chair at Wassa East, will be joining us tonight. All three are meaningful members of the committee, and as I will be leading the presentation, they certainly are available to provide clarifying information, as well as to answer any questions that you may have. Well, I think before we begin with the presentation, just a little bit of background for everybody, I think that will help set where we're coming from with our, with our resource adoption. So we will be focusing on Algebra I and Algebra II. Our curriculum is within the Common Core Standards for Mathematics, and both East and West teach to these exact same standards. The current resource used at Wassa East to teach Algebra I and Algebra II is known as Carnegie. The current resources used at West to teach Algebra I is CPM, and a teacher-designed resource based on Carnegie for Algebra II. Carnegie is up for renewal in 2021 school year, and so the department determined that they would like to review resources this year in anticipation of the renewal. East indicated a strong desire to choose a resource different than Carnegie. The testing data and the feedback from the staff indicated Carnegie does not meet the needs of its students. West had already modified Carnegie for Algebra II, and is using CPM, a product that they like, for Algebra I. They too wanted to see if there were other resources available that better, that may better suit their needs. So through discussion, it was very clear, as we went through the process, that both schools are teaching to the standards. What is missing, though, is a common summative assessment used by both schools. So that's one thing that we've been working on, and regardless of the resource that's going to be used moving forward in the future, both of the schools will be aligning spoken sequence, and students will be given a beginning, mid-interval, and ending assessment that we can use to compare. So that gives you a little bit of background as I move into the presentation. So one moment, please. I am actually viewing the presentation on my computer, same thing that you had, so I'll just have Cassie kind of move along as I go. So we started the process back in November, we put together a team that included members from the east side, including Horace Band, and on the west side, including John Muir, Derek Catlin have joined us as well. Just as a reminder, that Algebra I, a section of Algebra I is taught at both Horace Band and John Muir, so that's why we included them in the process. We look for people with AF experience, members from each secondary building, and variety of years of service, and with different backgrounds and different ideas, so we have a good cross-representation from the schools. We developed a time call line, which started in late October, actually, and we started by identifying needs, we started by calling and getting resources sent, so that we could start reviewing the resources. We conducted some interviews with some of the companies, and we conducted some research through end reports, determining which resources we would like to vet. At that point, we contacted those companies, and they sent us materials for us to review. We also followed the Wassa protocols, or the 31 indicators that met under the six essential elements, it's the system that the elementary use, though we modified some things to better fit of the secondary schools.
I think that's the next slide.
We narrowed it down to six resources that were initially vetted. Envision Math from Pearson, CPI, Reveal Math from McGraw-Hill, Agile Mind, Carnegie Learning, and Meaningful Math. They were all invited to come and present their resources. In the end, we gave three Bible, which was Envision, CPM, and the Carnegie. We went through a vetting process, teachers previewed the samples and resource materials of the vendors gate presentations, some did it online, and others actually showed up and presented in person. After each presentation, we had a briefing, and we had some very good conversations during this time, I think. It was therapeutic in some ways for East and West, they had some discussions about where they were with AF departments, and how we could come together, and also what was different. I think with the two different schedules that both buildings run, that became very apparent that different resources probably were a better fit in each of those buildings. So we followed up with contacts of other districts, asked around about what they were, what they thought of the materials, and we moved forward with the process. We did some instructional unit pilots with CPM and Envision. Multiple CPM Algebra I units were piloted at West, and Envision Math Unit was piloted at both East and West. The West AlgeTeam continued to adapt the The West Algebra Team continued to adapt the Carnegie Learning spoken sequence to support customized instruction at West. In the end, we reviewed the materials, notes, rubrics, we had extensive discussions on the needs of our students, and the capacity to make site-based decisions. We really felt, in leading this process, that through the discussions, each school, based on their unique needs, had to best the resource that would best fit their school. On the same token, was the idea that we needed to make sure that we were teaching the standards, and that we had a spoken sequence of that lined up, as well as the common assessments. So, in the end, what we came to as a conclusion is that Wassa East and Horace Band would like to go with the Envision Math Pearson series to support both Algebra One and Algebra Two. John, at Wassa West, John Muir, would like to continue with the CPM and the Carnegie units of instruction that they have in place right now. And so, we received bids from Horace Band, and for Carnegie, and for CPM, and we built that into the budget. And at this point, we would like to open up questions in advance of asking for approval.
Sorry, Cassie, I'm gonna, sorry, I should have said something? Oh, it looks like Pat has a question. And so does Lance. Okay.
Circumstances or what have you at each of the buildings, you thought that it was best to kind of let them go down their own paths and make their own decision?
Yeah.
I'm curious, other than the schedule, structure, and rate period versus not, what are the unique circumstances that drive the need to have different curriculum?
That, that's really what I was talking about, was the schedules.
So that's it?
Jason, why don't you, I see Jason wants to speak, I'll let Jason jump in.
Can you hear me? I assume, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, the primary reason is with our two schedule differences, the Flex Mod schedule at West allows us to structure our RTI much different from what Wassa East does. So, in essence, we're looking for, we have different needs to pull from this resource. Our RTI at East, we're able to do, customize the student's schedules, so we can put them in a small group and give them more, you know, small group supports, whereas the East schedule doesn't allow for that. So when we're looking at a resource, we weren't looking for a resource that their strength was the RTI and extra support, because we feel like that's already one of our strengths, whereas in Wassa East, and I don't want to speak for Doris, but that's my gist from their meetings, is when they were looking at a resource, they were primarily, they were really going to bolster their interventions and supports, whereas we were looking more towards, we're really feeling like that's a strength of our RTI side, and we were trying to look for more of a collaborative instructional support, so that we could look for rich tasks and things with more support for what we're doing in our classrooms. So it was just a matter of, our schedule does dictate kind of what our strengths and weaknesses are, and how we can meet those needs.
We would also include or bring in the fact the AP versus the IB, as far as the two different places where we're leading to just a different structure that we were looking for also on the east side.
Okay, thank you. So let me just, I may say something. So basically, you're not just looking at the schedule, but you're also looking at the advanced classes as well, AP and IB, and how those would be different, correct?
The foundation that we're going to try to lay for these kids has slightly different requirements from each of those areas.
Does Lance have a question? Lance and Teresa. Okay, do you want to call on them?
Sure.
Okay, can we go with Lance, and then when Lance is done, Teresa has a question as well? Thank you.
Yeah, I have a few questions on costs, wondering what the cost is of each respective program, how long the contract would be for, and whether there's any cost difference based on the fact that we're getting two programs rather than one.
Yeah, I can jump in on the Lance. So the Pearson, which is the newer, the new product, would be a six-year license, at roughly $98,000, and that would include their online component as well. The Carnegie units, alright, Jason jumped in on this, was the CPM was the one that was 34,000?
Yeah, the total cost for the two programs at Wassa West would be 34,000, with no contract. We have the rights to use the CPM resources for eight years.
What's the, what's the reason for the significant difference in the cost of the Pearson one, especially if it's applying to less students?
Well, one of the reasons is that we already have a lot of the CPM materials, and so this is just a renewal of that. We're getting all new textbooks with the Pearson.
Okay, thanks.
Teresa?
Teresa, did you have a question?
If both schools were to use the same program, would there be a difference in those two common costs that you came to?
Because I, Lance, because I didn't bid that, I couldn't tell you, but I would assume that there would be maybe some reduction with the, obviously, the more books you purchased and the more online sites, but I couldn't tell you an exact cost.
Okay, so from a material standpoint, maybe, but it isn't like, it isn't like it's double the cost, I mean, there's some sort of factor of the number of students that you have and the cost?
Exactly, yes, exactly. It's a per-student basic cost.
Okay.
Alright, do we want to call on Teresa?
Teresa's getting ready to say something.
Yeah.
Cassie, is it my turn to ask a question?
Yes.
Cassie, can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead, Teresa.
Alright, well, mine's rather philosophical. Back in November, I asked Dr. Hiltz if I should make a referral, and told him no, I didn't need to, but I wanted the data from the two middle schools with the extended math times that they have had for three years. And then when I'm listening to your intervention part, I'm wondering what impact it has, or does it have any, and can we see any connection with our students' math abilities with this extended time in the middle schools?
Paul, go ahead. So if I am asking what you're trying to get at, Teresa, is there a difference, is the middle school extended period making a difference in the amount of students who are receiving intervention services at the high school?
Yes.
Okay. I wouldn't have that data right now to determine whether or not that's the case, something we could certainly look for you. I mean, as a matter of fact, we're scheduled to present on that, the middle school schedule on May 11th, on the board referral. So, if you're okay with it, I could look up that data and put it as part of that presentation.
That concerns me, and it also concerns me about how we're, I know we don't have much choice in it, but how we're forcing a lot of kids to take math at a higher level that I wonder how practical it is, as I watched the men do siding at my house for the last week, and they are simply measuring and talking about fractions all day long, and I'm not really figuring out how Algebra One and Two have impacted their job, and I'm just wondering if we're offering alternatives to kids other than all college prep math?
Well, I believe in Doris, and Jason, and James, you could jump in on this, but we do have some courses at the high school level that would not just be based on algebra. That we have some courses that focus a little bit more on some of the functional skills that students need.
But do they still have to take Algebra One and Two?
Graduates.
We have some pathways, several pathways, there, no, the current graduation requirement requires three years, obviously, I'm sure you were, of math prior to graduation. We do have several students who will come in as freshmen, and I say several, depends on one year to the next, the size of the population. If they're not Algebra One-ready, that's normally data that's going from the eighth grade teachers and the testing that they've done and the work, the recommendation is that those students are not Algebra One-ready, so we'll take pre-algebra as freshmen, and then those students are normally not taking Algebra One as sophomores. And then both, both high schools have alternative courses, rather than going on to Algebra Two or even geometry, like an intermediate class, that more focused on skills, are more practical, and to where the direction that some of those students are going. It's not a matter of trying to make every kid fit the same mold and try to, you know, obviously, the kids who want to go on to college, you want to make sure that they're prepared, but that's certainly not the only pathway that a lot of these students are going to go, so we've been trying to adapt and meet their needs, help them with their understanding of math, but also make sure that they have the necessary skills to whatever career they do choose themselves.
So I have a question, I'm gonna... Go ahead. Okay. Okay, so, just a point of order, I've asked Cassie to call on board members, because when I unmute and she, we're giving feedback to each other here, it's just easier if one of us stays unmuted or muted. But now, I do have a question. So, and I'm not sure, I don't think I missed this in the presentation, but let's just assume we have a sophomore or junior at Wassa East who's taking Algebra Two, and then transfers to Wassa West, and is then going to be in Algebra Two. It's, is it still the same curriculum? The Algebra Two class is, it's not going to be difficult for that student to catch up or to adapt to that class in the transfer?
Hi, Jim and Doris, if you want to jump in, let me know, but that is never, to be quite honest, that's a fair question, we ask ourselves the same question, that is rarely ever the issue. Students transferring between East and West is, you know, they're getting a quality education on the opposite side of the river, so them coming into our classrooms is never the issue. Our main concern is students who transfer from, say, a school that those might, they were trimesters or something like that, and students will actually go an entire trimester or third of the year without having a math class, and then they transfer, and they haven't had any math all year long. That's really the main concern with transfer students. The East to West transfer is 99.9% of the time, the least of our concern. We know they're getting a really good foundation on that other side of the river, so it's usually a very smooth transition. You can also reach out to those teachers and see what their strengths and weaknesses are, I mean, yeah.
I would say, yeah, we may not be on the exact same page, but we're covering that similar material, that as Jason said, we have not really had any issues, and as he pointed out, we talked to, we sent emails and we say, okay, where were you, what have you covered, what can we do to make this adjustment?
The other thing, Teresa, moving forward, is that we are working hard to align the spoken sequence, because we are going to be using the common assessments, so they need to move along and cover pretty much the same concepts, so that the kids, when they take those assessments, are being tested on the same material.
Hi, Pat, can you go ahead with your question?
Sure, just a follow-up to my other one. So for other districts that have multiple high schools, right, Green Bay, Appleton, O'Clare, whomever, is it a common practice that they have multiple sources or one type of curriculum, be that math, English, what have you? Is that a common practice?
It can be, Pat, I mean, even within our own district right now, we have different resources in different disciplines, so this isn't, this isn't new just for math, we have other disciplines that aren't using identical resources.
No, and I'm aware of that, that's kind of where I'm going with it, I guess my, I'm really questioning, is that the best practice for our, or any other district, to have multiple sources, not just for the financial needs that Lance talked about, but, I mean arbitrarily, how can we expect to collaborate across the river, you know, when we let that seem to be the reason for so many things, and we don't even align on the same types of sources for the material? And I guess maybe that's a rhetorical question, it just doesn't seem logical on the surface to me. So, just because we're doing math, I don't think that that absolves other discipline from perhaps us looking at it more broadly across the board, so I guess there's not a question.
Cobb, would you like to ask your question?
Yes, thank you. So, it was mentioned that the program East picked, it has an online component, does the program at West have an online component?
Oh, yes, they both, the CPM has an online component as well, they're not quite the same, as far as what their intent is. The CPM, what we adopted on our side, is more of a parent help and tutorials for students to access, but it's not intended for us to be able to create assignments to push out to students. So, and I believe, and Doris, you can speak to this, probably, the component of what you are proposing has a little more of the digital assignments can be pushed out to students.
Yeah, we had started the pilot right before this had all occurred, and so we've been transitioning into the Pearson book within my department, and it's been a great help through this area, because we have many, many more resources than we had with the Carnegie textbook, as far as online components for quizzes, for tests, for assignments, and they have something called virtual nerves, so if the kids have issues, they can go into it, and someone else other than our teachers can explain it in possibly a slightly different way than what our small video clips might entail. So it's been a benefit even in this time that we've been utilizing that resource.
Thank you.
Jim, did you have a question?
Maybe it's just for confirming the comment, Doris, that you stated earlier, that the two schools chose differently due to the fact that there's an AP component on the west side and an IB component on the east side. That makes a little bit more sense to me, why it might be a little bit different as you're moving these students through the college track. Could you explain that a little bit to the board, why the difference with Carnegie versus the other one? That would be for the benefit of the board, sure.
Foundationally, the IB program looks for a more whole-person kind of aspect, and so what we're looking for with this resource is to provide that foundation for those kids too, possibly, and we do have some kids, I don't want to just sell the IB program on the east side, because we do have some kids who take the AP calculus test, and we have some kids who take the AP probability and statistics, but as a result of IB being our higher-level courses on the east side, we do look for foundationally, how can we get the kids prepared for the different aspects? And we've even got two different higher-level math classes through the IB program, through two different areas of coverage, and so some of our kids will get to the calculus and take an IB test after the calculus, whereas other kids will only get through a pre-calculus course and that, and so we just, we're looking for, again, how can we prepare these kids with the best foundation for that wronged student that IB is looking for?
If there are any more questions, could you ask them now? And also, if you have your hand raised, if you could click it a second time to lower the hand, because right now I have Jim Boucher and Kyle Lowe with hands raised. Thank you. Do you see any other hands raised?
I do not.
Okay.
Let me, let me...
Hi, man, can you hear me?
Yes.
Even though you're using different resources, you're still teaching to the same standards, the same score for math standards, so I don't want us to lose sight of that.
Okay, I'm gonna unmute.
Ready.
Okay, alright. Okay, all right. So with that, I would like to thank Doris, Jason, and Paul for answering questions for us tonight, and the secondary math resource team members that participated in this. There is a wealth of experience on this committee. I do want to give a shout out to Mrs. Betry, who was my algebra teacher at John Mayer. I see she was on the committee there. So with that, I'm seeking a motion to approve the Algebra I and II curriculum resources. And that'll be a roll call. And this will be roll call vote. Seeking a first and a second?
Is Teresa?
We'll give one to Teresa. We've got two from Beth. Beth? Mm-hmm. Thank you. Okay. Jim Boucher? Jim Boucher?
Yes.
Thank you. Cal Low? Thank you. Beth Martin?
Yes.
Thank you. Pat McKee?
Yes.
Teresa Miles?
Yes.
Jane Roche?
Yes.
Lance Trelle?
Yes.
Lee Webster?
Yes.
Trisha Zunker?
Yes.
Are you unmuted? Or muted, I mean? Muted. Okay. Okay, great.
I am.
All right, thank you again, everybody, for that. Let's move on to Agenda Item Five. This is Whole Child, Whole Wassa Short Cycle Report on Goal Optimization of Resources, Number Two, Recurring Cost Reductions. And Bob Testk will be presenting on this.
Thank you. I am going to take over the screen. I hope this works and project my own screen. Bear with me for a second or two. Somebody give me a thumbs up if you hear and see my screen. That's great. Okay. Short cycle report on Optimization of Resources, Number Two. Optimization of Resources, Number One, was to provide full people services teams in all of our schools, and you heard a lot about that last Thursday. Optimization of Resources, Goal Number Two, is to identify $100,000 of recurring cost reductions each year and reapply that $100,000 towards a strategic area of focus. In doing that, each department, each site was asked to capture spending efficiencies in the aggregate amount of about $100,000. This was, depending on my count, at one time it was a little higher than 59 different departments. Every school included, and every department, was asked to come up with about 1%. It ended up being about 1.15%. And the departments and the sites don't have access to personnel in their budget. So these were reductions that were done in efficiencies, not through salary or benefits. So things that we buy, purchase services, equipment, capital, things like that, but recognized by capturing efficiencies to put towards our strategic priorities. A strategic priority of focus was identified by way of many different means. The Optimization of Resources Strategic Planning Team started this work. The District Leadership Team, of course, had discussions that led to the strategic area of focus. Numerous community ideation sessions, the Morris Leverman's phone survey, to name a few. The priority of focus is to improve student behavior and safety. So that was pretty overwhelming across the different means by which I just mentioned a second ago. And more specifically, it was decided that the improvements in student behavior and safety would be made through identifying and hiring a student safety specialist, someone who will work with staff to improve student behavior and maintain the safety of our schools. Certainly a priority that many of us could agree on. The student safety specialist would be responsible for facilitating proactive and reactive crisis response, coordinating all school safety procedures and protocols, guiding mental health initiatives, and overseeing the at-risk program. What's the current status? The funding for this position would be made possible through previously identified efficiencies at the district level, the $100,000 approximate savings, not through personnel, but would also need to be approved by the board as part of the budget reconciliation plan. Later tonight, you're going to see a budget reconciliation plan that you'll have a chance to act on, and depending on what happens in Madison and what comes from the DPI with perhaps reduced revenue at the state level, we may even have to pass a second budget reconciliation plan, or the budget reconciliation plan might differ from the actual budget. But this is a strategic area of focus, and it's a priority that we would maintain. There are some challenges, of course, some challenges that we kind of know are lurking out there but haven't been identified yet regarding the uncertainty of the 2021 state budget. We know that the 2021 state budget would be the second year of the biennium, and usually we don't panic too much when we know that the binding of budget is in the books already. But we know that statewide revenue is down. Statewide sales tax revenue in particular is down, and the need for funding is up. And we don't know exactly what's going to happen with pre-K-12 public school funding, but there is that uncertainty. That uncertainty in what next school year will bring in the name of priorities that must also be funded. Our world is changing pretty rapidly right now, and we may have some priorities that come up that have yet to be determined or yet to be decided on. And we're going to have to just keep our eyes open for what those priorities might, priorities that might develop. And then, of course, competition for available funds within our district budget, that's always going to be the case, so that would have been a challenge almost no matter what, but it seems to be a little bit more so this year. What are the next steps? Presentation of this funding request for a student safety specialist through the budget reconciliation process that will begin later on tonight, specifically identifying the essential functions and responsibilities of that position. And then with approval through the budget reconciliation process, we would post the position and start the hiring process for a student safety specialist. That is the end of my prepared remarks. We have several other administrators on our panel that might be able to add some intel. Of course, I can add some. Larry Styler is also part of the Optimization of Resources strand. Angie Lloyd, our People Services Director, may also be able to add some additional comments.
Does anybody else talking up?
Any questions from anyone?
No, Bob can take them. No question? Beth Martin has her hand up. Okay. Do you just want to call on her?
Yes.
Having been through a process, a position such as this, is one person going to be enough for the district size that we have for both high schools, middle school? Is one, or is he going to have a support, this person going to have a support person? What else is going to follow?
I see Angie is unmuted.
Yes. Jim, to answer that question, this is kind of all the farther we've gotten with this. This is currently all under what I do, and with the glaring, I guess not behavior concerns, but mental health concerns, especially coming back after this pandemic, I think we're going to need more of a systematic approach to helping principals and teachers with some of the current concerns they're seeing in our students today. So to answer your question, I'm not sure. We're going to see if one person is enough. It's a really good start.
Okay, that's basically what I was looking for because of the district size that we have, and we have to reflect your comment about bringing all of our students back, there's going to be a lot of needs for our students. I'm just wondering if, one, as you take a look down the road, one person or one position is going to be enough, but I would, I would definitely encourage you to look at the support system for her or whomever is very necessary.
Lance, did you have a question?
Yeah, more of a comment than a question, just noting that 1% doesn't sound like a lot, but for those of us who've been on the board for a long time, we understand that most of these budgets the last decade have either been flat because of cuts because of inflation or have just plain received cuts. So, you know, kudos to the department if they're able to find 1%. Just wanted to comment that it doesn't sound like a lot, but we know that it is because these budgets are already stripped pretty bare.
Go ahead, Beth.
Okay, my question is, where would this person fit in the hierarchy? Would they report to you, Angie, or is it like a mid-level administrator position or?
Yeah, they would report to me, so we would work together as a people services department. They would be not an administrator, they would be a step under an administrator.
Okay, that makes sense.
Okay, then I will unmute. Okay, are there any other questions or comments? Don't see any hands.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, well, then, thank you for that presentation, Bob, and we're going to move on to Agenda Item Six then. This is referendum planning update, and Dr. Hiltz and members of the team will offer follow-up information from the April 23 board workshop.
Are we good to turn on?
Bob?
All right. Thank you, Madam President. The only update we have tonight is just to inform the board that we are developing a multi-week information campaign for staff and the community, and we're also developing virtual feedback opportunities through both surveys and a crowdsourcing platform, which would be a new tool for us. But clearly, the opportunity to inform our staff and the community about this potential project, and again, as President Zunker mentioned earlier, no decisions have been made on this. This is a project that's in development, and we need input to help refine this proposal, and we'll be seeking that in the next several weeks. Further, we are creating a document that would compare last week's proposal to an alternate proposal, and we'll be sharing that with the board and others in May. And I believe that is the end of that update for this, for this meeting, unless people have questions.
Hey Keith, I just wanted to say that I know that there was, and we received a lot of feedback regarding some of the general ideas on the proposal, but I've also received, and I know there's still a lot of questions and things that need to be worked out, and I also received a number of outreach from folks saying that, you know, that they didn't realize a lot of the things that you were talking about, just in terms of size, scale, number of facilities, et cetera. So while there's still obviously a lot of concerns, I thought it was, I thought you guys did a great job of at least laying the groundwork on what we're trying to attack there. So you and everyone else, I thought that went really well.
I want to respond to that. If you can mute. Thank you, Mr. McKee. And, yeah, I received a number of emails saying that people were caught off guard by this and kind of came out of the blue. And certainly, you know, the reason it happened that way is we were developing this at the request of the board, and so we wanted the board to be ahead of this proposal. We did share the foundational pieces with the staff one day ahead of that proposal so that they weren't reading about it first in board minutes or elsewhere. So we wanted to respect our staff that way, at the same time, respect the board's position in being out in front of this, this project. So thank you for that feedback, Mr. McKee.
Can I call on Lance? Lance has a question.
Lance, you have a question?
Just a comment again, since, you know, there may be public watching, one of the questions that I received from numerous people after the board meeting was, how much would taxes go up if that amount of money was borrowed? And we did explain in the meeting that they actually wouldn't go up, they would go down. So I just, you know, there was a lot of information there, so it was easy to invest, so I just want to take this opportunity to mention again that not only would the proposal that we received in the first meeting have increased the taxes, we could actually borrow quite a bit more and still keep the taxes flat or even lower than what we had for them already last year. So I just think it's worth, you know, to share that information because that's an understandable concern.
Thank you, Mr. Trelle. Yes, I, there are some things that you just can't mention too much, the first two that you just brought up. And additionally, another comment would be, we certainly understand this is a unique time and a scary time for many people, and we do not mean for this to, you know, add to people's frustration. Literally, it's just a conversation about the quality of our schools now and in the future. So, again, just want to recognize that we know that there are, that people are struggling right now with jobs and health, and, again, we are, we will engage in this conversation over the next several weeks and months, giving people time to understand and give input to this process. So thank you.
Okay. Any other hands? No. Okay, I can, I'm gonna unmute. Okay, thank you, Dr. Hiltz, for that update. I want to point out also that we really haven't received any communications after that meeting. So I think there was just a misunderstanding of the situation and that we were very clear that we are just having exploratory research and that the question that came from the board to you was before this global pandemic. So I think that, that that level of clarity was really critical, and we haven't, we haven't received anything since the meeting, except, I guess, these public comments that you received.
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, moving on to Agenda Item Seven, Legal Expense Summary for Third Quarter, and that is back to Bob, please.
Thank you. We see this report each quarter, this is the third quarter report, and what you see is just all of our legal expenses summarized by category and by law firm on top for the quarter itself, and then the sum to date, I believe $51,000 sum to date, that's a little bit higher than it was last year, it's a little bit lower than it was in the previous two or three years. So, pretty normal for this time of year. No action required.
Lance has a question.
Lance, you have a question?
Yeah, but when it comes to attorney assistance at expulsion communities, is that falling under the board expense?
I believe it does. Yes, it does.
Is there a policy in place for, you know, what factors we're using to decide when we're going to have an attorney represent us, when we're going to go alone?
Do you want me to speak to that?
That I can't say. Dr. Hiltz maybe has an answer on that one?
Everybody muted?
Yep.
Lance, I would not say that we have written protocol. We usually bring in a legal, an attorney to support if there are legal questions about the foundation of the case, or if a family would indicate that they were bringing legal counsel.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I'm gonna unmute. Go ahead. Okay, I don't think there are any other questions. Thank you for that update, Bob. We're going to move on to Agenda Item Eight. This is an action item, and this is regarding facility user fees.
Okay, I can jump in and start this. This is a discussion that we started, it was Bob and Larry Styler, myself, I think Amy was in on some of the early meetings, Greg, Harvey, and Brian Miller started way back in, I think, October, discussing a revision of the custodial fee usage. And, you know, really, when it all came down, this whole debate came down to seeking balance of recovering the real cost that it, that it costs the district to run events.
of recovering the real cost that it, that it costs the district to run events, and then allow people to use the school versus a group and organization's facility access and use where it's not too cost prohibitive. And so, we've had a lot of debates, hours of meetings, kind of poring over this and coming up with ideas and thoughts. And eventually, you know, Bob suggested that Greg and Brian and I sit down and kind of hammer something up and bring it back, and we did. And so, tonight, Greg, I think, is going to take the lead a little bit because he has a lot of history in the district on some of this. So, I'm going to turn it over to him to talk about not only where we are currently, but where we'd like to go.
Okay, thank you, Paul. As Paul hit on, and this has been a situation for as long as I can remember, as a member of the district, that we have multiple user groups that want to use our facility, and includes everybody from our, what we consider to be an in-school organization, right on down to an obvious for-profit organization, and everything in between, and at all times of the year. So, this is clearly something that folks at the mob really have to deal with on a regular basis. And in our administration, it sort of boils down to, how do we identify better our user groups, and where they fit into the rental and custodial fee structure? So, dominated a lot of our time was really trying to identify, what really are these people? And we think that the document now provides a little clearer delineation of the user groups and the costs that are affiliated with both the use of the facility and any potential custodial costs that are incurred. So, as you look at the document, it's broken up into three tiers, with tier one being those folks and those situations that require, I guess, for lack of a better way to put it, the least amount of district service. You know, we open the building, they have their meeting, they have a practice, they do this, they do that, and there's not an intense amount of district-needed services that help facilitate that particular event. You know, you move into tier two, now you're probably talking about more people, more use of more of the facility, sometimes different portions of the facility that are used that incur a bigger expense or more time factors involved, involve custodial services. Then obviously, tier three, there's a very high need for our school district to be involved, especially with our, with our staff, which incurs a real cost, and we recognize that. But we wanted to make sure, too, that our in-school people were taken care of appropriately so that when they ran a function that was in direct benefit for their particular group, that they saw the best possibility to maximize their efforts along the line there. But I think the document, I hope the document is fairly self-explanatory, but I would probably stop at this point, just to see if there are any questions. I hopefully had a chance to review it prior to the meeting, and perhaps we could help on in some way if you do have questions.
I do have a question, thank you, and it's regarding this placement. So, you have four categories, or four criteria, rather, resources, staffing, facilities, purpose. My first question is, do each of those have equal weight? Are they, you know, 25% each in the factor determining the placement? And my second question is specific to purpose. What if the purpose of the event benefits the community? Maybe it's, so Wausau School District students, I think, would be encompassed in that, but if it's something that's really beneficial to the community, where would that fall? Is that on a tier two or a tier three?
Paul, I don't have the measuring rubric in front of me, so I'm clearly at first a traditional difficulty. Right, Trisha, one of the things that, when we look at this, is people could end up for each, each one of the categories on a different tier, depending on what their usage is. So, that could come to be a determinant factor. You know, that, the community, if, if the preponderance of evidence would be that it's a community event, but yet they're requiring very low amount of resources, staffing, and facilities, you know, there needs to be some flexibility for Larry and his crew to look at that and say, that probably falls into a tier one. It's very difficult for, because we had this debate, we tried to refine it to the point where this is what it's going to be, and, and we just couldn't get to that point. I mean, there has to be some judgment call at some point for Larry to be able to have that flexibility. This is more, like I said, sort of a, for Larry and others to use, and Greg and Brian say, okay, where, where would this group fall based on most of the evidence that they're giving us? And so, I wish I had a better answer as far as saying we could pinpoint whether or not somebody would fall into a certain tier, we would need to have some flexibility to as well.
Well, I think in the next slide, you probably stated it well when you said we use the preponderance of criteria. Which number is it? Number three, a preponderance and purpose will be used to determine it. So, like you said, we may have people that fall into tier one and two, in two categories, tier three in another, and, you know, tier one in a third or fourth. It's going to be somewhat subjective.
Lance, did you have a question?
One, most of the feedback that I've received from school-based groups like athletic teams or PQs is primarily not a resistance to a facility charge, not a resistance to actual additional spending, like a custodian. But one of the concerns I've heard about custodian charges is, for an example, let's say, the event needs the custodian there for eight hours to open and close, but during the six hours between the custodian is doing other building work, which is actually a compromise for the custodian. Does this tool address that in some way, that the group doesn't actually use the custodian for all eight hours?
Yes, Lance, I think it directly does. If you look at under the notes, item number one, we recognize that in big events that are put on by some of our school organizations that are for the, for those school organizations, that they need to have those, those events in order to, you know, fund rates to help, help boost their programs along. We also recognize, though, that we have the responsibility to cover some of those custodial expenses. So, we felt as though, in our maximum, up to just a little overall, it might cost about three quarters of custodial time, that we could administer that or apply that to the cost of running that event for this in-school organization and sort of meet our end of bargain and allow them, allow that custodian to do the in-school work that could be done when they aren't directly needed at the event. So, as we get it in most events, because I'm not, I hate to speak for every single one of them, because I'm not at every single one of them, but they're all, they're all different. You need somebody to open the place up, you need somebody to check periodically on, on the basic human needs during the course of a day, and you need somebody to close it up and secure the building. And we certainly recognize that that involves time, and we're responsible for some of that. So, we do think that that helps, that this tool reflects our in-school programs, taking some responsibility for that.
Okay, good, and then, thank you. The second question I have is, is there any way to address the unexpected expense of snow removal and maybe later fill in the board? Kind of the next, you know, we have, I'm planning on snow removal at a high school. Bring a leader, et cetera, that is something we just, we just, we just can't address it?
Well, I think, Larry, if you want to jump in, go ahead.
Yeah, so, there's really not a good way to do it, because if you assign a fee to, you know, all users, call it environmental assessments fee or whatever, you know, somebody that's hosting a baseball tournament this summer is going to say, wait a minute, timeout, I don't, I don't think it's fair that I should pay for snow removal when I'm hosting a baseball event in July, which, you know, obviously makes sense. So, I think what we're going to do is try to recoup some of that money, minimize the snow removal when we can. Obviously, you know, if you have a facility use requiring 100 people, we wouldn't clear the entire parking lot for 100 people. So, we're really just going to try and work hard to minimize it, work with whoever is using the facility that we can, and get a good handle on, you know, just how big of a group they're half, and just really control the costs as well as we can.
Yeah, the reason I ask, you know, for the board's information, if you're not aware, is the snow removal can be really expensive. So, you could have a group that their entire event is going to earn $1,000 for their group. You know, we could have three or four times that cost just to snow that one day. But we don't know if it's going to snow that day, so it's just a hard, it's a hard issue to handle.
It is in, to answer the scale of the question, so a typical snow removal at both high schools is about a $10,000 bill. $5,000 apiece. But again, that assumes we're clearing the, block the entire facility. So, if we only need to clear up, you know, the main roof, you know, and then up for 100, obviously, that cost can be controlled, that's certainly a lot less.
Beth, if you had a question, you can go ahead, and when Beth's question is done, then Jim Boucher can have his question answered.
I just had a question about the use of technology. When someone rents a classroom, do they have access to what's in that classroom, like a projector, for example, or those kinds of things? Or how do we limit just anybody who rents a space from hands-on technology? Is there a way to deal with that?
So, basically, if they're doing something, unless they're an employee, they really don't have access to technology, and, you know, they could grab a computer, but they really don't have a way of logging in or making anything function. If they are planning to host an event where they're trying to project something in the auditorium, for instance, then we would have somebody from John's staff available, and obviously, there's a cost associated with that to run that equipment. But as a rule, non-district employees really wouldn't have access to any sort of computers or audiovisual equipment.
Thank you for clarifying that.
I don't know where this might be for, but it sounds like maybe Greg, you can, it sounds like you've got a lot of communicating with coaches at all high schools pertaining to this topic. It seemed to be a hot topic about three, four months ago. What, how are they feeling at this point in time? Because, as Lance pointed out, a lot of times when coaches run a tournament, they're running a clinic or things of that fashion, some clinics aren't going to bring in a lot of money, and if they're paying a lot to the district, they're not getting any benefit for the students that are coming up. So, give us a little feedback from what the coaches have given to you at this point in time.
Yeah, that's, that's a very good, very good question. The coaches have been accepting of this current document. They understand that the custodial, the incurrence of a custodial charge is real. It's, it's kind of hard to run an event of some of the magnitude of some of those events and just say, well, we really don't need a custodian there. They, they understand that that's, that's a real issue, and the charge is going to be coming their way, they, they feel like they can swallow that and still make their, their event, you know, perfectly successful with their intent. What they, what they struggled with initially was being charged to use a facility that, that they need to use to run their, their programs in. And they, they see this as a very good compromise, that, that the charge they're going to incur is a, is a custodial charge, and that the facility charges are necessarily coming their way. So, the coaches have been real good about covering this kind of compromise and seeing that it benefits both them and the district.
Teresa, would you like to go ahead with your question?
I have two questions. One, is there any group that's going to be most upset about this charge, and will, will maybe contacting us? And number two, if, like, the Boy Scouts or the Girl Scouts use facility after school, or I think in some schools, they have a little church groups that also, on occasion, will use school classrooms after school, are they charged for this?
Okay, so I can feel that question. So, generally speaking, when a custodian or custodial staff is on half during their normal hours, so, you know, weekday evenings during the school year, we wouldn't charge them custodial fees. The two examples you gave are both, obviously, non-district evidence. So, we would ask them for the facility use fee, and generally speaking, the type of folks you just illustrated would fall into tier two, and those facility use fees are really pretty minimal.
Okay, and then, is there a group that's going to be most upset about our new charges? And I'm thinking specifically of Sueda.
I don't know. I suspect they will be happier. I don't know if they will be completely happy, because as compared to our old fee schedule, this one would cost them less.
Okay, well, those are things I needed to know. Thank you.
Okay, so, is there additional presentation on this? I know that we have the notes here, I don't know if we need to go through these numbers, I don't, it doesn't seem necessary on my end, but is there any further presentation from Paul or Greg?
No questions, other questions?
No, not at this end.
Okay, all right, then I'm going to, okay, all right, well, thank you very much. Then with that, I am seeking a motion to approve the revisions to the facility user and custodial fee schedule. And this, just as a reminder, is a roll call vote, so looking for a one and a two? Okay, Beth's a two, who's one?
I didn't see it.
We see a two, but not a one. Sorry about that.
I can change mine.
Teresa.
Teresa was a one.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Jim Boucher.
Yes.
Kyle Lo.
Yes.
Beth Martin.
Yes.
Pat McKee.
Yes.
Teresa Miles.
Yes.
Jane Rouge.
Yes.
Lance Trollope.
Yes.
Lee Webster.
Yes.
Trisha Zunker. Yes, thank you, everyone. Okay, great.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 9, resolution authorizing the redemption of certain of the general obligation refunding bond series 2010 dated December 3, 2010, and authorizing the transfer of funds, the establishment of an escrow account with respect to, and the defeasance of certain of the general obligation refunding bond series 2011 dated November 15, 2011, and general obligation school building bonds, series 2015A dated August 4, 2015. Just as a summary, six months ago, on October 28, 2019, the board approved a tax levy for the 2019-20 fiscal year that included approximately $8 million applied to previously issued callable debt in a strategy known as debt defeasance. This strategy reduces approximately $500,000 in interest This strategy reduces approximately $500,000 in interest costs while offering greater flexibility in future debt management. The second and final step in this process is to formally approve the establishment of an escrow account for the purposes of defeasance of certain general obligation bonds and transfer of funds into this account. And the administration requests that this formal action take place at the May 11 Board of Education meeting. Bob, was there anything further or does that summarize it?
I would love, I would love to take an opportunity in light of Thursday's discussion and in light of also the referendum cost discussion to just get a chance to show the memo. And the memo you see on your screen right now is very detailed. And it lists every bond issue that we have, including the ones that we're calling, including the others. And the most important number is in the lower right-hand corner, $500,000 in interest savings. Oftentimes, people see that, they think that's $500,000 that we could reapply to something else. That's $500,000 less that we would tax taxpayers to pay off our general obligation debt. So debt that we issued through referendum, we're repaying some of it. And in doing that, we're saving $500,000. That's not able to be applied anywhere else. So that's important to understand, A. B, this is a picture of our debt structure before we started defeasance. This is the third year we've been doing this. And we had, this is not only referendum debt, but energy efficiency exemption debt as well. And it was between eight and nine million dollars of debt. And we saw this opportunity in 2024 to maybe address some needs district-wide. And we got pretty serious about addressing those needs much earlier than 2024. So we started this defeasance process, which is prepaying some of this debt while allowing our mill rate to go down, mind you. And this is after the last two years and the current issue that we're in the middle of, defeasance. The cross hashed parts of the graph are no longer there because they got placed in the dark blue. So the cross hashed are the prepayments that we paid in the three different years finishing up with this current year. So you can see what our debt structure is going to do following this year. It's going to drop from right around $15 million down to about $4 million. If we engage in this strategy one more year, if we hold to the November 3 referendum cycle or referendum date, we will have a chance to do this one more time next November. And in doing this next November, our debt payments will go from about $15 million down to about $3 million. Now, if you want to give this picture some scale, a new debt issue of about $120 million paid back at 3% interest over 20 years would be an annual payment of $8 million. So if we add $8 million to these green bars, even if we pick a flat amortization over 20 years, we're going to keep that mill rate lower than what it is right now because it'll be quite a bit less than the $15 million right now. That's important to understand, especially when we're in the middle of this conversation of issuing large amounts of debt for referendum. And as was mentioned earlier in the evening, I think Dr. Hiltz mentioned it, I think Lance, you mentioned it, we just can't mention this often enough. This is important. This is a strategy that next November will be in the fourth year of that strategy, setting ourselves up to address needs, only needs that the community would agree to, and also save taxpayers' interest payments. $700,000 last year, $500,000 this year. So we will need a motion. The official action comes May 11 because that's when we'd be recalling the bonds and we would have documents that look a little bit different than the ones you see in the boardback on May 11. Yes.
Okay. All right, I'm going to unmute. Are there any questions for Bob? Teresa has her hand up, but I think that's from before. Teresa, you have your hand up, but is that from before?
I think so, I tried to erase it.
Okay. Okay. Okay, you're muted. Okay, great. All right, thank you for that additional information, Bob. So we have two motions here. Let's start with the first one. I am seeking a motion to authorize the establishment of an escrow account for the purpose of defeasance of certain general obligation bonds as presented. Need a one and a two. Okay, uh, Lee is one, who's a two?
Cause two.
Cause two, I see her, thank you. Thank you for your patience. Jim Boucher. Sorry, that was me. I'm sorry, Jim Boucher.
Yes.
Calo.
Yes.
Beth Martin.
Yes.
Pat McKee.
Yes.
Teresa Miles.
Yes.
Jane Rouge.
Yes.
Lance Trollope.
Yes.
Lee Webster.
Yes.
Trisha Zunker.
Yes.
Muted. Okay. All right, seeking a second motion. I'm seeking a motion to authorize the redemption of outstanding bonds as presented. Beth is one, Beth is one.
Lance.
Lance. Jim Boucher.
Yes.
Calo.
Yes.
Beth Martin.
Yes.
Pat McKee.
Yes.
Teresa Miles.
Yes.
Jane Rouge.
Yes.
Lance Trollope.
Yes.
Lee Webster.
Yes.
Trisha Zunker.
Yes.
Okay, I'm muted. Okay. All right, Bob, we're going to go right back to you with the 2020-2021 budget reconciliation plan.
Okay, what you see on your screen right now is a memo regarding the budget reconciliation plan, a plan that we put in place to balance the 2021 budget. The following document is the actual plan, the chart itself that talks about what we're going to add from the budget, subtract from the budget. Keep in mind, this started in November with all the budget assumptions that we were making. So we presented the budget assumptions to the board, I think in November, maybe December. We presented the five-year fiscal forecast in January. And that fiscal forecast suggested we have to reduce about $308,000 in order to be balanced. Now, some of the assumptions that we made in January, most recently, may be in jeopardy. One of the big assumptions that we made is that the state revenue limit is going to go up $179 per student for the last year of the biennium. And we also made the assumption that special ed categorical aid was going to go up from 27.5% to 30% for the final year of the biennium. At the time, those were legislated, that was not really in question. The budget reconciliation plan that you see in front of you still makes that assumption because we don't have anything else to assume at this point. So we're presenting a budget reconciliation plan that assumes everything we assumed in January. We're cautious going forward because we don't know what kind of news we're going to get from State of Wisconsin or DPI over the next couple of months. The next time we see the actual budget will be May, Education Operations Committee, and then the final, not the final budget, the first version of the budget in June before our next fiscal year starts. Between now and then, we may need to make some changes based on what we learned out of Madison. So ignoring the changes we're going to have to make for now, this budget reconciliation plan does include salary wage increases for all non-certified, non-teaching employees of 2.5%. It assumes our new teacher salary transition is in place, and that happens to cost 2.94%. An important assumption, health and dental insurance premiums are to remain flat. No significant changes in our health and dental insurance plans. It's also a pretty flat staffing request, a couple of reallocated staff. Generally speaking, 0.7 additional FTE. It does acknowledge the optimization of resources goal number two, about 1.15% of selected budgets that are not salary and benefits to be repurposed to our strategic priority. It does make the assumption that special ed categorical aid goes up to 30% this year, which was not that far from a couple of months ago. It does recognize revenue limit capacity per student going up $179. Some rumors that I've heard from some local legislators and legislators elsewhere in Wisconsin, that could end up being a zero. The 179 per pupil increase that we're counting on right now could end up being a zero. The 30% for state categorical aid for special ed could also revert back to 27.5. Those two assumptions, if we're asked to make those assumption changes, would result in another $1.6 million of reductions on top of the $308,000 that this reconciliation plan is assuming. Open enrollment in versus open enrollment out, we're also making the assumption that that's flat for next year. We know that the open enrollment in is going up, we know open enrollment out is going up, but we're fearful of the out going up a little bit faster. We're assuming those rates are going to stay flat. So with that, we have a budget reconciliation plan that does balance our budget. Just to let you know how to read this chart, the negative 308 is in the upper right-hand corner. That's the target. And the greens add to that deficit, in other words, make it a bigger deficit because the greens are budget additions. The reds make that deficit go smaller. We're shooting for zero, we're shooting for a balanced budget. So with that in mind, we've got many of them. We can talk about each and every one of them, we could talk about the big ones. Based on the board's preference, you've been looking at this maybe for a couple of days. I could maybe start by answering some questions or I can go through each and every one of them. But it does result, if you see at the bottom, $321,000 in reductions, and that's very close to the 308 that we are shooting for. There are some personnel additions in here, but there are also some personnel subtractions resulting in a net add of about 0.7. There are some additions to waive, expansions to waive. There are some staffing additions in here that we have to be careful of. Adding two special ed teachers, adding 1.2 staff at John Muir, adding one alternative education teacher at West High School. Keep in mind, the assumptions that we're making, we're cautiously optimistic about, but we also have to be prepared for some changes that come from Madison in the next month that suggest that $308,000 is much larger. So once again, with board members' preference, I can go through each one of these. We've got team members here that maybe know a little bit more than any of these than I do, or we can address them as a whole.
Lance has a question.
Lance, go ahead.
Yeah, so with this idea that we could possibly get hit with 1.6 million less than what was budgeted, which, you know, it's really unfortunate because we always count on the second year as the one that we can actually count on. Have, have you done anything or tried to project in any way what sort of savings we have from this year with the schools not being fully open? Such as transportation, anything else, any sort of savings that we have that would add to the fund balance that we could apply to take the bite out of some of that?
Yes, I have done some work on that. Nothing I'm ready to reveal tonight, but some pretty significant numbers. And then it comes down to our comfort level with, with spending the one-time additional revenue, so to speak, you know, to be reduced expenses. The one-time reduction in expenses and how we apply those to recurring expenses going forward. Most of these, the one that's called out in bold is the only one that's a one-time additional expense. We all know we have to be careful when we take one-time savings and reapply it to a recurring cost going forward. So if we get comfortable with that, we obviously reduce some of the greens you'll see up there, maybe get bigger reds that you see up there. We're, we're going to shoot for something that is $1.9 million. That's a tough number to hit.
One of the things the board will need to know in order to gauge that comfort level will be some sort of idea on what we, or what you project the fund balance would, you know, get down to at the lowest point this year.
Yes, that will be part of that decision if, if it comes to that.
So, so Bob, I don't know that we need to go line by line. I think if board members have specific questions, that's probably a more efficient approach. So do board members have specific questions about the additional expenses or expense reductions? Ready? Teresa has her hand up, but I think that is from before. Might be from before.
Teresa, do you still have your hand up or is that a no one?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Yes, I can.
I just wanted to make a comment about, I was happy to see that the EEA school has finally gotten to have a full-time principal position because that's been something that's been needed for a long time. So I'm, I'm very pleased to see that. That was my only comment. I'll see if I can get my hand out.
Okay. I don't see any other hands.
If there aren't any other questions, the, the best news would be we pass the resolution or pass the motion that's being put in front of you right now and you don't hear from me again until we have a budget in May that perfectly aligns with this reconciliation plan. That is normally what happens. We see a budget reconciliation plan about this time of year, we pass it, we see a budget that's very closely aligned with the reconciliation plan, and then that's the first version of the budget, you see the second, third, and fourth. Just be aware that you might see a process that looks a little different this year.
Okay, I'm going to sit down. Okay, it doesn't appear that there are any additional questions at this time. So I am seeking a motion to recommend to the full board the 2020-2021 budget reconciliation plan as presented. Teresa's one. And do we have number two?
Pat.
Seeking a two?
McKee.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Jim Boucher.
Yes.
Calo.
Yes.
Beth Martin.
Yes.
Pat McKee.
Yes.
Teresa Miles.
Yes.
Jane Rouge.
Yes.
Lance Trollope.
Yes.
Lee Webster.
Yes.
Trisha Zunker.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Bob, and everyone for your work on that. Now, I am seeking a motion to adjourn. Who do we got?
Teresa and Jim.
All right, you can just call. Okay, all in favor? I.
I.
I. They may have said it while I was muted. Okay.
I heard.
Okay. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.